All right. Nope, Mark is not going to attend the meetings. He's still gonna be our website manager, so he'll post our agendas and our meeting minutes for us. But he just wanted to participate to sort of provide that historical perspective as we kicked things off and then step away. See if you can wrangle them back in. Okay, perfect. Let me, I thought I would share my screen this time. Cause in the recording, I wasn't moving that one and it was a little wonky. Um, so did everybody have a chance to look at the meeting minutes from April? Did anybody have any corrections? Okay, wonderful. We will call those approved. Uh, the second item on the list is discuss.org.gov migration and any updates on timeline. I have no new information to share. Um, I haven't heard.
Weeks.
Four to five weeks.
Is what was mentioned at the board meeting.
Okay.
What we can go with that part without. And then they will, they will redirect for a year, they'll redirect.
Okay. Okay, great. So that shouldn't present.
Easily do it for longer if they were.
Um, it shouldn't present too many issues. I think it'll probably be about a month before we're ready to release the survey anyways. So that sounds like the timing will work out well. Uh, any questions, comments on that before we move on?
Well, it would be a problem if you're gonna print up postcards and have the QR code because the QR code goes to dot gov.
Oh, that QR code goes to.
Dot gov.
But the dot gov doesn't exist yet.
I mean, I'm.
You mean it goes to that or? Yeah. Yeah, so I think.
It's fine to use because it's gonna redirect anyway.
Yep. Yeah, so I think let's cross that bridge when we come to it. Let's see if we can, how far we get tonight with finalizing that and the survey. Um, we may need one more final meeting to look at those things and then that'll probably be about the time that they finalize that. So um, I think that segues well into our next item, the Ontario County Items of Note. Supervisor Vestola had mentioned that Economic Development wants to do some sort of housing needs presentation. Um, I thought it might be a good opportunity to promote our survey and I didn't know if we wanted to do any sort of public outreach about the comp plan in conjunction with that. I have not had a chance to chat with Ryan Davis, but um, I'd be happy to hear anybody's thoughts.
What's, what are they, a presentation to us?
No, to, it would be like a public meeting, um, to the, any town residents who are interested in attending to find out more about the, um, housing needs in the town of Canada.
If you have anything on that.
Uh, I don't, um, I'm not exactly clear on all of the details about what the presentation was included. Uh, but I think Economic Development has been meeting with like each town individually and just kind of talking about what particular um, issues or projects or things, um, the town is facing. Uh, countywide, we do have a severe housing shortage. Um, they just did, the county just did a housing study. Um, and there's definitely more people who want houses than existing stock. Um, so I think this is kind of maybe focusing on any parts of that study that particularly pertain to Canada.
So that, that was part of the Lake George thing besides the short term rentals.
Will you turn your microphone on?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Hopefully it has batteries.
Has batteries. Anyway, then they are doing the same thing. Housing shortage, of course, it's some high rent is around there, but some low rent too. And they cut the, um, minimum lot size from three acres to one. And then they also said you could put two houses on one acre.
Wow.
Yeah, and then they're doing apartments too. But they're, they're increasing their tax base. That's their, if you want to increase the tax base, you're gonna make more money. And so, short term housing, like, you know, relaxing the restraints. But that's, I just talked that. I mean, I don't know what we could do. Except something like that.
Yeah, I don't know that those types of specific like lot size or anything are affecting um, people building here. I think it's more, it's, we're not gonna have any expanded water. We're very unlikely to have any expanded sewer. I think it's more of an infrastructure thing. Birch can't even get internet.
Yeah, they're, but I have to pay more than you do. I have it.
It's more, we have more infrastructure constraints here. Um, but I think that that is something they would talk about within this presentation. I think there are some, um, I forget exactly how Supervisor Vestola was explaining it, but ways that um, you can incentivize housing even with wells and septic and things like that. So I guess the feedback I'm looking for, and I have to check with Ryan Davis from Ontario County Economic Development is, I think it seems like a good fit to try and do something with the comp plan in conjunction with this. If we're having people come in the door, I think, you know, we definitely want to promote the survey and maybe just talk about the comp plan a little bit. I guess I would need to find out a little bit more about like the length of his presentation. Obviously, nobody's gonna wanna sit here for two hours. So if he's got, oh, you know, a very long presentation, it might be hard, but um, if it's shorter, maybe we can at least do something in conjunction with that to promote the, this planning process.
My personal opinion is, given past surveys, I don't think people want more housing. It's rural character. We don't have the public, we don't have trans, I mean, transportation is an issue depending on what type of housing you're putting in. Um, we don't want the housing that Canada has. I mean, I drove by, I forgot the name of the road. I couldn't believe the number of double patio homes or whatever they're putting in. It's just rows and rows and rows of the same thing. It's pretty densely packed down by the lake anyway. We have a lot of rural, you know, parkland. I don't know, there's not a lot of empty space. There are people that are dividing up lots and I'm assuming they'll sell and if someone wants to build a house, they'll build a house, but.
Yeah.
I don't think we need. I mean, the whole idea of economic development to build our tax base, I think it's. I mean, we can do it. We can ask that in our survey, but I suspect most people are gonna say, oh, thank you.
Yeah, you know, it, it's definitely a balance of so many things. That, you know, the short term rental issue is we are seeing housing stock being used for short term rentals instead of, you know, family homes and things like that. But also tourists spend a lot of money in our county and they, you know, help offset the tax base and increased housing does, you know, offset the tax base as well. So there's a lot of complicated factors and I'm sure that's kind of what they would talk about in this presentation.
Short term rentals aren't removing that many houses from the housing stock. I mean, people are, generally people have short term rentals, so using that to cover some of their costs. There, it's not a moneymaker. I think it is.
It's a very big moneymaker.
It's a big money.
I don't think it's as much of an issue in the town of Canada, but in other towns within Ontario County, it is significantly impacting the housing stock. Um, so I'll, I'll touch base with Ryan Davis and get a little bit more information, um, and update you guys with that. Uh, also in the email was the contract with Ontario County Planning Department for support services for the, um, for this process. Did anybody have a chance to look through that?
I looked through it briefly. I didn't quite understand it. Are we paying or not? I mean, they have dollar figures in there.
Yeah, I, um, I didn't quite understand it myself entirely.
Signed.
So.
Already signed. But I don't know if, I don't know if it was approved by the board. Um, not that I recollect. I don't recollect. There was discussion regarding, um, the county gives us forty hours. Yes. Time.
Correct.
But you guys also have something going on the planning board where you're looking for input from the county too, aren't you? No?
No, we're looking for somebody to serve on the Ontario County Planning Board. Um, Steve Groth is currently the liaison for the town of Canada. Cause the Ontario County Planning Board is a representative from every town. Um, and Steve Groth is currently doing that, um, but as of July, he's going to, um, resign from that position. So they're looking for somebody to do it and nobody has stepped up.
There was some mention about twenty plus thousand dollars as a limit. Is that a limit they pay or we pay?
As part of this contract?
Yeah.
Um, yeah, so I think a lot of these services are optional and I apologize this, I just looked at this on Monday and
Unbelievable.
Um, I haven't had a chance to talk to Supervisor Vestola about it. I'm assuming that it's sort of, um, like these are optional services if you wanted. We have our forty free hours.
Good.
And after that, I think if we wanted to do any of these tasks, um, that we could, I think it's sort of like a menu of optional services. Um, because we didn't, we didn't budget twenty five thousand dollars.
And Chris talked about being billed every other month or something, but I didn't, so.
Okay.
There was an email that got sent out today, I believe. I know I was included and I think you were.
About the consolidated funding?
Outside funding, yes.
Yeah, so.
I didn't have a chance to look at it. I just.
Haven't either.
Briefly saw it at the end of the day, but.
Yeah, so consolidated funding, that's like grants we can apply for.
So what do we need the county for?
So I guess that's, that's what I would be interested in feedback from you guys.
Mapping?
Mapping for sure.
Uh, data on population.
I think that would be helpful.
They're gonna have that or we pull that from the Census Bureau or?
Um, so what I was thinking is, should we have the county representative come to our next meeting and just chat a little bit more about like, let me talk to Supervisor Vestola and understand his perspective on this and make sure that I'm not off base in thinking that we sort of choose what we want on here or we think we need, uh, support with.
So if the guy comes, that's billable hours.
Correct, yeah. But we can just have him zoom in and we have the forty free hours. So we have forty hours of assistance.
Careful we're not using that unless we need it.
Yeah, so I think it might be worth having him come and just kind of explain some of this stuff. Um, and we then can make a decision what we think we need assistance with and what we think, um, we can do in-house.
Do we have like a bullet point list of what services they can provide or can we ask them for? I mean, is, so what the contract is, I read it through and I'm looking at the dollar amounts and I didn't.
Yeah, so the fee schedule sort of explains it. There's project initiation and asset issue identification, analysis and mapping of existing conditions, community survey, we're really already doing that ourselves, vision workshop. I'm not sure how the vision workshop differs from the community focus groups. Um, land use and community facilities plan, implementation plan, consolidated plan and EAF, adoption and additional unprogrammed special. Um, so I think sometimes towns don't necessarily have a super capable group who steps up and is willing to do what we're doing. And they just have the county do it all and they don't really have a team like our team. But.
We could do that?
No, we're not going to do that.
Oh, I think it's probably a little easier for us because there's not a whole lot going on.
Exactly.
You throw us to a victor or something like that.
Exactly. So, you know, our, our town is, you know, smaller and rural. We don't have, you know, a downtown business district or anything like that. We also have a very capable team here, like public art outreach and education is what I do. So I feel very comfortable in running community focus groups and stuff like that. I don't think we need a ton of support. Um, so I think this may have been sort of like a boilerplate contract. And so again, I'll touch base with Supervisor Vestola. Um, but I do think it would be helpful, even if, um, we just had him tune into our meeting for like a half an hour to talk about.
It also would have been nice to see the contract before it was signed. So if you have some input on that, you know, I think, you know, are we running the planning? This group or is Supervisor Vestola running this into it? I, you know, I just don't wanna be crossing paths or cross. I think we're just trying to expedite.
Yeah, I think he was concerned because the forty free technical hours are on a first come, first served basis. So you do have to execute a contract for those. And like I say, I think maybe this was a little boilerplate. There's also somebody new in the planning office that is taking over some of this stuff from Linda Phillips. So he hasn't been there super long. Um, so when I had been like before we even started our meetings, I had met with Linda Phillips, it was probably almost a year ago now and kind of talked through a lot of this stuff and we had looked at some of the contracts from other municipalities. So, um, you know, that now Thomas has taken over that and, uh, so yeah, I was a little bit surprised by this. Um, I will get some more information to share prior to our next meeting. Um, okay, uh, review of the postcard development. I do apologize. I forgot to attach it in, uh, the materials that went out. Birch put together a beautiful postcard for us. Let me.
I think it's seven, what did I say, seven by eleven or six by eleven? Where'd you get that? I stole. I'm hoping there's. On the internet?
Yeah, I've got it here too.
So I have, uh, a little bit of information from the board meeting regarding uh, discussion about the postcard and the accessibility of the survey, kind of, kind of blends these next two topics together.
Okay.
Um, the concern was with some of the older residents in town not being tech savvy, being able to, you know, not go on the website to access the survey, answer the survey, that sort of thing.
Yep.
And also having to drive up here to pick up a copy of the survey.
Okay.
Some don't drive. So it was mentioned that maybe, uh, along the lines of the postcard, there would be a spot on there where if you wanted a copy of the survey mailed to you, you could fill it, fill in the bottom of it and tear it off and mail that back. Not gonna happen. I don't, I'm not a postcard, that's not.
I mean, we could put a phone number or something if you want a hard copy mailed to you.
The concern over that was who's gonna be responsible for?
For mailing them.
No, for answering the phone call. By link. And keep, yeah, because.
Well, and it would be the same thing if somebody mailed something in.
Is this anecdotal or how, how many older residents? I mean, I find concerning the park down off of thirty six. Where, where the conversation stemmed from. Correct. The park up there is six, the trailer park? Yeah. Yeah. Um, I think people would be very surprised that the number of older people or even that have internet access. I mean, it's.
Yeah, I think it's a really small minority.
Real minority.
That, uh,
Couldn't drive up here or do it over the internet. But. Or like you said, even if, even if there was a phone number on there or you could call and request to have one mailed to you or something like that.
Yeah, again, somebody then is gonna have to be responsible for taking the phone calls and mailing them.
And then. Person's name and address and. And when they fill the survey out, who's gonna go pick it up? Are you gonna put a stamped self addressed envelope in there?
And who's gonna, then the, the survey has to be annually entered into the system.
The Pandora's box situation.
Exactly, so. I mean, we, and we've talked about this extensively in previous meetings as well about accessibility and making sure that everything that we do is inclusive and that, um, people can participate.
Um, so people out of state who own property, that's impossible.
Well, it depends on where they get their tax bill mailed. Because these postcards will be mailed to where your tax bill goes to.
Right, that's gonna be a lot of places. I'm just.
Yeah, so I mean, if they own property in Canada, they are eligible to take the survey. So when they get the postcard, they can scan the code and take the survey online.
Okay, but we can't prevent. We have no mechanism to prevent people who are not landowners in the town of Canada from completing the survey.
No, but I also think that's a very, very few. I don't think we're gonna get flooded.
No, I don't think so either. I mean, I, I was surprised Richmond had up signs, you know, which everyone driving by could. Well, it's a discussion about that as well, whether Sam, sandwich boards will be an option that would be worth pursuing. We're planning on doing two mailings.
Which, you know, and we talked about at the, I believe it was the last meeting about, um, you know, saving some of our funding in order to do two mailings because that is literally getting to everybody instead of things like the Penny Saver ads that people may or may not see for that same amount of money, we can do a second mailing. Um, so I mean, we can definitely look into signs. Um, but again, depending on the cost, do you know, do we have sandwich board frames? You don't know or we don't have them?
I, I don't believe we have it. I don't believe we have it.
So, uh, you know, we would have to purchase.
Everybody's actually asking about it, so. I know I don't have any, so. Other than the one that they put out that says vote here for, uh, election day. And it probably comes with a board of election.
Yeah, I bet it does.
Well, maybe whoever's suggesting that wants to make some.
Um.
I don't know, I just think you can do. You can bend over backwards. It's still gonna be really hard to get people to fill a survey out. Yeah, right. I think if we can get them to react to the postcard and the second postcard, we'll be lucky. I have no idea. Do we know what other towns percentage wise, did you, have you have any sense of?
Um, I do know.
Fifty or twenty percent, I would say that's a lot. That's a lot.
Yeah, I think there was like, I, I don't, I don't even wanna say because I don't remember from the previous survey. I do know from a survey that we did when I worked for the town of Canada. Um, it collected some demographic information like, um, how old you were and your gender. And the majority of people that were taking the online survey were over sixty five. So people, I think it's a really, it may be over seventy five are ones that may not have access or the ability to use the internet. But I think it's a much smaller amount of people than people realize. And, and historically, the most likely people to respond to surveys here in our county are women over the age of sixty five. They're like usually the biggest cross section that, that responds to surveys.
Did they use some library?
Yeah, but if they're concerned about people who don't drive.
Well, it's, we can go door to door. You know, let's get the town board involved and everyone go door to door. And we'll do the surveys. This is actually. I think, I think both where they were just referencing last, last go around that everybody.
Yeah.
The technology option, it wasn't there.
Yeah, so, and.
Well, it was, but not as many people had it, right?
We've really discussed this a lot, uh, it should. If it is in the meeting minutes, um, it's just, again, if we mail a survey to everybody, it's sort of a waste. I think we're actually gonna get less responses because people are less likely to fill it out and mail it back in than just do something on their phone. Um, and then somebody has to manually enter the survey that gets mailed back. Um, somebody has to process all those. Um, it's a much higher cost. Um, I think it's just really unnecessary and
I, I agree. A hundred percent grace with you. It's just me and the messenger. You're the messenger.
Yeah.
You know how that is.
Well, I appreciate you being the messenger. Um, so, okay, yeah. So do we wanna look at the postcard? The postcard?
Oh. Uh, we have the postcard.
Oh, yeah, let me get it. Hold up. Sorry, I keep forgetting. I'm actually sharing the screen.
The right hand side is for the label.
I'll get it pulled up here. May one second.
Nine one twenty twenty four. Well, I made that up, but I.
I've got it up here. Um.
Hopefully we can get this out.
So, town of Canada needs your opinion for our new comprehensive plan. My only thought on this is should we say something like, um, for our comprehensive plan update? Since it's not like a new thing, we're updating an existing document.
Well, yeah. Here's a. Really new. It's an. It says for our new comprehensive plan.
But it's not a new, it's an, an update. It's not a new document we're creating.
Yeah, we are. It's gonna be a new document.
It's gonna be an updated document. We're not creating it from scratch.
I think either one is fine. I think Birch is fine. Else, I'm done. It could go either way, um, you know. You know, it's trying to get people fired up. That's right, we're changing everything.
Okay, I can live with it. Uh, visit.
I was trying to keep the front simple.
Yeah, I think.
To make them.
I.
Over. Simple's good. Got the code, so we'll see the repeat of the code on the back.
I love it. I love the picture. I love the code on the front. I think it looks great. Um, visit Canada.org to scan the QR code to take a survey. Comma, learn more about why a comprehensive plan is important. You can also sign up to receive emails from the town of Canada regarding meetings, highway operations, important information from the clerk's office and more. You can also sign up to receive emails from the town of Canadice regarding meetings, highway operations, important information from the clerk's office and more. Hard copies of the survey available at town hall, surveys due by nine one twenty four. We need your input. I think this all looks great, my only little nitpicky thing is should there be the word and instead of the comma in the first sentence? Should it say to take a survey and learn more about why a comprehensive plan is important? Instead of a comma.
The time is kind of expected. Come on, and without the end, learn more. Without the and learn more.
To me, it just seems like. If there's a comma, then there should be like a third thing. Which I think there was, and then we cut it a little shorter.
Nobody's gonna care. Seriously.
Yeah, so we originally, we had like three things listed and then. We were trying to shorten it, so we removed one of them.
I should do Canadice dot org in all caps. I mean, I was just looking at caps and bold.
Isn't the actual web address lowercase though?
It doesn't matter. Um, I just want that to stand out so people can see it, and then. The label goes on the right. Do I put a return? I don't think on postcards typically you have a return address, right? Or would I put a return address up in the? Left hand, on the right side, top left, right?
Uh, we can work with the printer. They'll know.
No. Uh, the printer is, it's all online.
Oh, so you just print them online?
You put all your information there, hit send.
And then they mail them?
And they print them and you get them in two or three days. And I think I, did I send your pricing on it?
Probably. I don't recall.
Not that much. I mean, I'm figuring two thousand cards, is that?
Yeah, that makes sense, I think we have about a thousand. Households, addresses in the town, I'll confirm that number with Eileen.
Because to print three thousand isn't that much more. If we want extras.
I don't know if we need a thousand extra, but.
Well, I I don't know what the increments, five hundred, maybe something like.
We just like drop them from a plane in the sky or.
Well, you know, I have a drone, I.
That's how we'll get them to the.
Right.
The area in question.
Own delivery available. Uh, I don't.
Can we just?
Should I put return address in this? In a box?
I. I might.
You want a phone number down? I mean, do we want a phone number on it?
I think, let's just put a phone number. Um, and once we get this finalized, I will send it to supervisor Vassola and Eileen and the town board for. Final approval or input or whatever.
We could ask about the voice. The voice uh messaging system here.
I was just thinking.
If you could add like an extension number seven, that would.
We could put the extension for Ted's phone. You know, it's the planning board and it's doing it, so we'll use the planning board.
That's a good idea. I'm sure. I'm sure he'd be happy.
So I put that under, we need your inputs, what's that implies you could call it in, or? Put a phone number on here.
I really don't think we're gonna get very many calls. I maybe we put it after uh hard copies of the survey available at town hall period. Um, call blah 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 for assistance.
I guess I'm a little worried about if you put a phone number in there, then people are gonna, can you get me a copy and mail it to me?
I really think if we get ten calls, that'll be a lot. And I'll just ask Ted to forward the. Request to me and we'll figure it out.
So I'll put the phone number down below, we need your input.
Yeah, either there or before the survey due sentence, I think either of us. Wherever it makes sense.
Where does it make sense?
I guess there's the most space below.
One move, we need your input up. And put the phone number below.
Okay.
Well. That's why I wanna move the inputs. I wanna make sure the phone number isn't in.
Right.
Implying that we want your input.
Yeah. So we'll um. And we'll touch base with Ted about that at. Planning board, just.
So am I putting a return address?
Oh, um, I don't know, I might just double check with, um, I'll get a quote. From a printer I've used previously, just to compare it to the Vista Print and. When I get the quote, I'll ask them that question, cuz they're super knowledgeable about. That kinda stuff, and there's also two. There's like a way. Um, if you organize the. Addresses in a certain way, you can get a reduced postage rate.
Yeah, that's the bulk. It's it's not as huge. It's not gonna be huge savings.
Okay.
And it's, we're gonna be paying the letter rate. Which if we don't get it out before July. Was it July fourteenth? I think I put that in the email. The rates go up.
You did, that's right, you did.
So.
The town does have an account at um.
Yeah, that's who I was talking about, yeah, they're great to work with. Yeah, they're great to work with.
This would be easier because then it can be paid. Be a voucher during the. While we abstract.
Yeah, I think you're gonna find, they're gonna.
Yeah, we'll get, we'll compare the two. We'll compare the two, and they like maybe even able to like print. The addresses on them for us, I don't know, it might save us from having to do labels, I'll just, I'll just chat with them, they're great to work with, I've worked with them a bunch, I know them well, so. Um, they'll be able to answer those couple of questions about the return address and. If bulk mailing is worth it and that kinda stuff. Okay, any other comments, questions about the postcard before we move on? We'll take a look. I not opened the survey yet. Survey. There it is.
I went to presentation last night, it took them ten minutes to get it up on the computer screen.
Oh, no.
And they had to run a test run before the whole meeting started. It's like.
Okay, so, yes. Well, it shifted cuz we added, I went, I listened to our meeting and made all the. I'd made most of the changes as we were going, but I wanted to make sure I didn't miss anything, so I. There was a question that got added or deleted. Oh, it was we split town highways and town road shoulders. Um, okay, nineteen, yes, nineteen is where we stopped. Uh, what are your biggest concerns about the environment in the town? Check all that apply. Um, so we were gonna look at the list of answers, did we like these ones, did we miss anything? Water quality of lakes, logging, deforestation, wind turbines, or large solar farms. Degrading or non-compliant septic systems, waste reduction and disposal, illegal dumping of waste.
Did we make a note of no concerns, or?
Oh, that's a good one. No concerns or not concerned?
No concerns.
Any other comments? Should the town encourage more commercial development? Yes, no, only in certain areas, no opinion.
And I think we're. What about, did we talk about taking out the more? I mean, do we have commercials development now?
Should the town encourage?
Yeah, there's not much.
Well, we have the. Classes on the whole Bull Hill Road.
Do we wanna take out?
Oh, did they move already?
That you're talking about backus?
Yeah, the one that came for the planning board?
Yep, yeah, they're, they moved into La Monja or something like that.
So should we take out more for industrial development as well then?
Yeah.
Okay, so we've got commercial and industrial, we have yes, no, only in certain areas, no opinions. How quickly should residential development occur in Canadice? Slower than present rate, present rate, faster than present rate?
Definitely you should probably put space in between there, so the questions on the same page as the uh.
Oh, it will show, it wa- this is just a Word document, it'll show up different once it gets entered into the actual program. Uh, what type of housing would you prefer to see develop during the next twenty years? Check all that apply.
About none.
What type of housing would you prefer to see?
You gotta have one for Mark to answer.
Any other comments on that one? Um, I have a placeholder here for short.
Well.
Maybe.
What's the biggest issue with short-term people that are applying for permits for that right now?
Well, one question would be.
Just getting them to apply?
Do you? You want short-term rentals or not?
Yeah, we have to specify what that gives. Supposedly, right, less than thirty days.
Yes, thirty days or less.
Less, less than thirty.
I think maybe we sort of phrase it. Like question twenty-two, how quickly should residential development occur in Canadice? Where there's like three. Answers like. Like, current rate. You know, do we, do you, do you want less? Do you want the current, is like the current amount good, or should there be more, like sort of? Yeah, so less current or more. Um, I just, I'm not sure how to phrase the question. Do you? Yeah, but it has to be where you can. And I think you're right, there will be a definition.
So I would put in parentheses. Or emphasis.
Rentals.
Thirty days or less. Rent rented for less. Or go Google it.
Are, um. Rentals. Do you think? No, I I'm just not sure how to.
Also, very interesting if you can. Tie this to where they are, are they in the Lake District or are they in the rural district?
There's two over on Canadice Lake Road. Should there be two questions? Should there be one about amount and one about area?
Yeah, I was thinking uh. Tie them. Can we? Can you put it all in one question and you can? Please check, try, check.
Two-part question.
Yeah.
Or a short answer, what's your opinion about short-term rentals?
Instead of multiple choice, you're saying?
Yeah. I mean, I personally think there's a lot more, it's. It's a lot easier to manipulate the data if there are multiple choice.
Correct.
And we aren't, like, sometimes the short answer questions are, don't have as much value because it's hard to do anything with the data. Like, we may see themes emerge, but if we get two hundred and fifty responses. Then, we're going through everyone and trying to like figure out what the themes are, whereas if we have multiple choice, it's a lot easier to like. Understand the data.
If you pose the question like. Short-term rentals in the area are on the rise, do you think the town should take a more regulatory role? Less or current? The per- the permit that. Yeah, only probably fifty percent of the people have actually.
No, I bet it's higher than that. There's quite a few permits I've done.
I'm struggling, sometimes I have to sit down and think about phrasing a lot before I can come up with how I wanna say things. Um, short-term rentals of thirty days or less are on the rise in the area, do you think the town should regulate? Short.
I I would say about on the ride, short-term rentals exist in the town. And then. And and then. I don't want any. I'm okay.
So we're.
I think they should be restricted.
So we're talking about three. Different things in regards to short-term rentals, one is the amount. That is sort of how we started the question. The the second is about. That is sort of how we started the question, the the second is about if we should. There should be areas, and then the third is should the town have more of a role in regulating them? Yes or no, and maybe that's just a yes or no question.
Can we ask the question before the short-term rentals, do you live in the Lake District? Or rural area? Then we can tell from their answers.
We asked in an earlier question if they have lake access.
If they have lake access, or if they live in the Lake District.
We say, is your property located on the hu- on? The Honeyway Lake, on Honeyway Lake, and or do you have like access rights?
Right, but there's probably people that live in that area that don't have, that aren't either.
So maybe we say, is your property located on Honeyway Lake? In the. Lake District? And or do you have like access slash rights?
Sure.
I would agree with that, okay.
And then we can use that. Would be interesting to see the person's answer on short-term rentals.
Yeah, you might be getting quite a few of the neighbors that live next to, uh.
Right.
The short-term rental place that are sick of the fireworks in the middle of the work we are getting, uh.
Well, fireworks are illegal.
Okay.
In, I don't know, I don't have the regulation, did we put that in the posted, uh, rules?
What?
No fireworks.
Uh, I think there. That was no, that wasn't, um, there was something. About noise, though, there's no noise ordinance in the town, but I think we'd say quiet hours, yeah. Short-term rentals are. Rentals of thirty days or less, do you think the town should regulate short?
How about, what is your opinion of short-term rentals?
That's like another question.
Is that a short answer question? Or are we gonna provide?
In favor, against?
Well, yeah, you could say. Yeah, and I'm okay with them, uh, I'm opposed to them. I have no opinion. I don't know.
Like be overthinking again.
Yeah, let me, uh, I'm gonna just get that down real quick, and then, uh, let me.
Okay.
Think about it and wordsmith it a little, and I'll, um, forward a copy, so what is your opinion of short-term rentals? In favor? Of short-term rentals? Against short-term rentals.
Should be limited?
Should be.
Limited in number?
In number. Should be limited.
For and for no pain.
Limited in areas. No.
I think if you're not next to one, you probably don't have much.
I can't figure out if the house next to me is one or not, there's always different people there.
With the, uh. One right on the CEO.
That blue, that blue one, there's always different people there, I think it must be just like a big family that owns it or something.
You can see if they have a permit.
Okay. Uh, question twenty-six, are you satisfied with the number and quality of public park and recreational facilities located in the town of Canada ice? Yes, no, no opinion?
Sure.
If additional investments were to be made for recreational facilities by the town, what kind of facilities would you like to see? Recreational programs, additional opportunities for public spaces on the town hall campus. Community center, community garden pass trails, picnic facilities. Excuse me, restrooms, trails and paths for hiking and biking, none.
Where is the town gonna do? Trails and paths.
This was a question that was requested by Supervisor Vestal. Should the town assume a role in encouraging the New York State DEC to do any of the following? On the nearly seven thousand acres of state forest around Canada ice and Henlock Lakes? Maintain status quo, expand recreational opportunities, reduce recreational opportunities, town should play no role.
No.
Um, that is a previous question, and again, these last couple. Were all requests by Supervisor Vestal, so.
Twenty-seven was requested by Chris.
Yes. And twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight was a previous question, but that was before.
We re.
City of Rochester owned the property and it was.
We reworked this question a lot, um, to try and make it more relevant. So. I think we need to leave that one. Um, to what extent should the town? Oh, go ahead.
What does that question gain us?
I mean, the town can work with the DEC to, you know. Talk about expanding recreation opportunities or. You know. Yeah, so that's another question, that's the next.
Well, actually, so you wouldn't work with New York State D's, you'd work with the forests. Forestry.
That's part of the.
Part of the C, but.
Yep.
I.
Uh, to what extent should the town government be involved in the protection of historic landmarks within the town, check all that apply? Uh, town inventories, historic homes, barns and sites, town invests more in preservation of cemeteries. Town purchases blue sign markers for historic sites. Uh, I have a note, these last three were from the original survey and they need to be reworked or removed. Uh, technical assistance provided for preservation. Uh, we definitely still need. So I would vote, we get rid of D, town identifies and designates landmarks permits. Required for landmark modification and technical assistance provided for preservation. Everybody agree with that? You okay over there, Birch?
Sure.
Um, to what extent? So then I think D and E are a little redundant.
Where are we? To what extent?
Uh, yeah, so we're on twenty-nine, to what extent should the town government be involved in the protection of historic landmarks? We have the, they do an inventory of homes, barns and sites, they preserve cemeteries, they purchase blue sign markers. Should, I'm thinking, we don't need nominal or minimum involvement, we just have no involvement.
Right.
Yeah, that was a question, can't be. Comment, and thirty, last, not least. Please use the following space to let us know if we missed your issue, or if you have any comments that you want to share. You can also add additional details in response to any of the questions above.
So. Here, that's pretty much the survey, right?
Yeah, so the postcard, the postcard is advertising the survey, yes, so this survey will get entered into. An online platform, so people can do it, and we had talked last time, making sure that the platform is compatible with phones. Tablets and desktop computers, um. And then, yes, people can either go to the website and click on a link, or they can, that little code can be scanned with your phone and take you. To the website, uh, we did talk about taking you to the comprehensive plan. Landing site versus straight to the survey, just so that there was a little bit more information about what the comp plan is.
But we wanna make, so the survey will be. On our comp plan page at the top. If they wanna read more about, they look below, and also on the front page of Canada's that are.
Yep.
You have to pay extra dialing to get it put up at the top, or?
I know a guy. I know a guy who do it for us. Um, okay, so I am. Uh, my homework. I'm gonna try and get it done early this month, I'm gonna check in with the county about the, the contract and. The economic development meeting, I'm gonna get that survey. Done early and back out to you guys. I don't know, I guess maybe we'll have one final meeting, but I think it would be helpful if everybody looks through the survey. Prior to the meeting and we just talk about any last minute comments, I don't think we need to go through question by question again. Um, we'll look at the postcard next time, uh, I will talk to Quick Prints and get a second quote. And I will get you the information about the. Return address, thank you.
So are we looking, so the next meeting will be June?
Yes, it will be June.
So we would hope to get these out by July first. You give them like two months? September first, a good cutoff date?
If you can get them out.
Right.
So our next meeting, the second Thursday in June is June thirteen. At six o'clock. Uh, and that would give us a couple of weeks. To get the postcards out by early July, any? Thoughts about the postcard going out the week of fourth of July, I don't want it to get lost in the shuffle.
Well, if you get, if we approve the postcard on the thirteenth.
We could probably get it out the last week of June.
How, how quick can she do late, I would get labels from who would be? Assessor, sorry.
Uh, yeah, we'll, we'll have to look into that.
I'll put, I mean, putting labels on and stamps on, it's fully about.
Yeah.
I have some kids, it would love to join you and your.
Well, give them lots of candy. Um.
You can take them home with you then.
Nope. Maybe, do we wanna shoot to approve the postcard? Via email prior to our next meeting, I mean, we're pretty much there, there were just a couple of like small little tweaks. And then we can get it to. Chris and Eileen and the town board to have a look at it, and then.
I, and for your, we can't go to the town board, I mean, you can, Chris and Eileen, but.
Okay.
You can't wait for a town board meeting and that. We're not, board meeting would be the tense. I mean.
So I'm thinking.
We need their approval?
I'll see what Supervisor Vestal thinks. He may be able to just find approving it himself, um, I'll just check in with him about that. And then maybe if we have them printed, maybe at our June meeting, we do some labels.
Yeah, if it's this, it's literally two and three days or whatever.
Yep. Yep. June thirteenth? You just don't wanna do labels, do you?
No, that's, uh, highway, uh, highway golf tournament. Oh, it's an all-day event.
Well, we'll excuse you from the label party.
Hopefully not.
I did have a high, high vis vest on when I pulled in the parking lot today.
Pretty hard to set the scholarship up, and this is our first year of actually using the funds to present. To scholarships to Boise students, so.
Cool.
I need to be there to actually present, lead, present the project, so.
Yeah, yeah, no problem at all, so it sounds like we'll try and wrap a few of these things up anyways via email prior to the next meeting. Um. So I will try and get those out sooner than later. Uh, anything else anybody wants to chat about before? We end for the night. Oh, I think you turned it back on. I thought you were gonna say something. Uh, and it depends on the batteries too. Um, okay, well, thank you guys all so much, I so appreciate you being here and your inputs. And everything you're doing for the committee.